All right.
You're good to go there.
Called over to the public. Oh, God. City Council meeting for June fifth, twenty twenty four. We're moving right into a public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding twenty twenty four slash twenty twenty five possible uses of state revenue sharing funds, the twenty twenty four slash twenty twenty five City of Gearheart budget, and the twenty twenty four slash twenty twenty five Gearheart Road District budget. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the Gearheart City Council to hear this matter at this time? Hearing and seeing no hands. Does any city council member believe he or she has a conflict of interest?
No.
No?
No.
Is there any additional correspondence? I'm now going to call for public testimony. Are there any presentation comments by proponents? Are there any presentations, comments by opponents? I'm going to close the public hearing. We are now going to go into deliberation about the uses for the state revenue sharing funds, the Gearheart budget, and the Gearheart Road District budget. Is that not correct? No?
We're going to do this later.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any conflict of interest for the city council meeting? Please say no.
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 No? Okay, now let's go to the approval of minutes. That's so many words. Can I get a motion for the Budget Committee meeting for Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four?
Um, I give you a motion to approve the minutes from the Budget Committee meeting on Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right. Not really a much of a way of minutes, but can I get a motion to accept the executive session of the City Council Wednesday, May first, twenty twenty four minutes?
I move to accept the executive session minutes of Wednesday, May first, twenty twenty four.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? Okay, now I will ask for a motion for the regular meeting of the City Council on Wednesday, May first, twenty twenty four minutes.
I move to accept the, uh, minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council Wednesday, May first, twenty twenty four. I'll send it back.
There any discussion?
No.
No.
Yeah, I have a discussion.
Okay. Third page?
Third page. Uh, visitor Melissa Addy, Saturday, August tenth, at Trails End Park. What is the name of the park? People call Centennial Park?
Centennial Gardens.
Yes, we decided that at a meeting like this Trails End Park.
Did you guys vote on it?
But it was, it was, no, it didn't do a, a, a regular vote, but it was just by consensus. And they all said, yeah, that's the way it's gonna be, please, Centennial, Centennial Gardens.
That's that first park.
Yeah.
At Trails End Park.
At Trails End Park.
At Trails End Park.
Right, there are two parks, one side by side, because the Gearheart Association needed something. Okay. So.
All right, that's, that, 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 that explains everything, because, you know. I've always known it as Trails, as Trails End Art Center.
That's what I've.
School property.
Right.
Centennial Gardens, the Trails End Park.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, I'll take a motion for the Budget Committee meeting Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty four me- minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the Budget Committee meeting on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Moving on. Everyone's got a copy of the planning commission report. Do you now notice in the, on the backside, they're telling us it will be a month before we get their road draft minutes, because they want to, uh, okay them before they give them to us.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay. Mayor's report. I've totally forgotten what I was gonna report on, so I'm, uh, oh, I know. I'm gonna miss July's meeting, and Council President Backrow will be running it. I will be gone for a few weeks. Having fun. All right. Councilor reports. Dana?
Um, so this last month, I attended the Budget Committee meeting. Um, I attended a county commission meeting to express my concerns about public safety and garbage in the state's jurisdiction during holiday periods like July fourth. I also voiced my support for a county-wide preparedness plan rather than each individual jurisdiction passing problems around like if they can. That was citizens concerning the, uh, July fourth beach cleanup preparation, um, and discussed, we're probably gonna, um, put out this week some, I'd like to put something on the blog, setting up a, a pre-beach meeting so that we, just like we did last year, where we just meet in the park and we come up with a, a plan whether you need, uh, people to be assigned to each, um, entrance to the beach or not, and depend how we want to organize it. Um, spoke with many homeowners and contractors about the implications of the proposed tree ordinance. Um, threw roundabout through some, um, I, I I'm not even sure I should report on this. I, I, I guess I should say that this is unconfirmed, but ODOT was out on, um, specific way on one-on-one doing measurements and have reportedly told some citizens that they do have the money to proceed with that intersection fairly soon. However, the rest of the Gearheart project is still waiting for funds. And that's, again, secondhand information, but I, I believe that it's.
Sounds accurate.
It's accurate. Um, and then also attended two meetings with the Flush Group regarding, um, the public safety building. Um, we really don't have a whole lot to report yet, because we're just establishing so far right now, discussing the timeline for foundational issues like, um, the history of the project, and, um, giving, bringing up to speed on what they need in order to get future authority for decisions and things like that, and, and maybe Chad will expand on that in these reports, I'm sure. That's it.
Sure.
Uh, let's see, met with the airport committee and a couple things, uh, with the Seaside Airport. Um, the first one is that at this point in time, uh, in the most near future, they have decided not to pursue, uh, a zone change, but that could, uh, not stay in that way in the future. Um, the other thing is they're going to have a fly-in on June fifteenth, uh, open house, uh, with light refreshments, so if anybody has any interest in going out and hanging around with the people who have planes and talking with them, or seeing what the operation looks like, or whatever, feel free to go out there, think it starts maybe at ten, not positive about that. Um, second thing is, uh, cert team met, and, uh, we are considering, uh, disbanding the Gearheart, uh, cert team in favor of joining the county cert team. So we're looking into that, uh, and there should be an upcoming meeting, um, or information from the county coming on that. Uh, that would allow us, according to Chief Como, um, to get some more monies for the things we'd like to do, uh, as cert members, uh, and also obtain more training. Uh, third thing is, uh, I was also on the Budget Committee, uh, and came away from that with some concerns about where we are going to get monies and teacher of this city. That's it.
Thank you. Rita?
Well, I won't tell you what I did, I'll tell you what I didn't. I had, I was, I was scheduled to go to the Regional Housing Authority meeting, which is held on the third, um, Wednesday of every month, however, my car wouldn't start, so I missed that, and I, I really feel bad this month. Also missed a town hall meeting due to illness, but I'm looking forward to running a council meeting next month.
Good.
So I'll be doing something.
All right, Besson?
Um, I attended the same meetings on the, uh, with Dan and Paul, uh, on the, with public service. First.
Okay, thanks a lot. We'll move on. City officer reports. Sergeant Brown?
This is only filling in for Chief Gray to reach an IP of Ops, uh, beyond retraining. So first, I think we have a pretty productive May. We have a total of a hundred and forty-one person contact. That includes, uh, four arrests, twenty-four citations, and sixty warnings, most for speed. Giarbana is out on his own now, and he is very motivated, and he gets a lot done, so we're very happy to have him. Really all I wanted to report, I think, what do you have some questions for me?
Any questions?
What were the arrests for?
Speed.
For?
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I, I couldn't tell you all of them off the top of my head.
Thank you.
I can tell you one was probably for DUI.
Yeah.
Yeah, DUI.
There is a DUI on there. And at least one, uh, police officers hold court, mental health issues and domestic violence arrest. The fourth one, I'm not entirely sure. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
You're safe and.
Thank you.
Chief Como?
Thank you, sir. Uh, so first, we'll have the call breakdowns for last month. We had a total of sixty-nine calls, which was thirty-three of those inside the city limits and thirty-two within our fire district. We sent out a four times to the seaside once for a building fire and once, uh, they needed that for man, so I think they were on multiple calls in time for that. And then went to one in an apple, once each for building fires for those districts. We received a once, uh, for, ended up being a chimney fire, uh, in Surf Pines. Were able to keep it confined to chimney because of quick response and our mutual aid, put that in there. On the second floor in that house, there was like a coat hanging there just from the heat radiance in there, starting to melt and, and, uh, get deformed because of how hot it was. And one of our fire officers was, on the second floor also, there was like a regular-sized door you could open the chimney, and he was watching the bricks spread apart and everything with heat in there, but entirety of the house, other than no damage at all inside the house for there. So it was very good job from the crews with that. Uh, how about compared to twenty twenty-three? May of twenty-three had forty-nine calls. For last year, we ended, uh, May of twenty-three on incident two forty-five. We ended May this year in two seventy-seven. Last month, we were twelve incidents ahead of last year. Now we're thirty-two incidents ahead of last year. Our fundraiser went very, very well, Fireman's Ball, thank you for those that came and helped out and helped carts and supported us, uh, with that event. It went really, really well. Uh, we brought in, uh, great funds with that. Because of the rising costs, we didn't make as much as, as, uh, previous years, but it was very comparable, uh, to what we brought in, so it was very successful for there. Couple months ago, I told you that we got a grant from the State Department of Commerce's office for thirty-five thousand dollars for summer staffing. I wanted to tell you about a few other grants that we've gotten this last month. Twenty-five hundred dollars for medical bags, sixty thousand dollars for vehicle extrication tools, sixty thousand dollars for high fidelity, high fidelity training mannequins. Uh, you can troll them from like an iPad, you can put different simulations through them, so we can do medical training on them. Thirty-six thousand dollars for PHTLS, stands for Pre-Hospital Treatment and Life Support, and extrication class, and then we've got eight thousand dollar donations to send students to EMT school for, for standard community. Um, other than that, that's all I have, unless there's any question.
Well, I've got a comment. Who wasn't responsible for all those wonderful grants?
That would be our new division chief. Yeah, she's been doing great work.
Thank you.
Uh, that was not me at all.
Right, I got a question. I realize that in the county, we've got a mutual aid agreement.
Mm-hmm.
When's the last time Napa ever came here?
Um.
And why are we going to Napa?
They, so we actually moved up to Astoria on that one, because Astoria moved up to Napa. Um, it's the auto mutual aid agreements.
I realized that a mutual aid.
And it was, I think, about six weeks ago, they came here when we had a fire just on the other side of Sunset, Norway. Um, they were coming in for that. We had a bottom fire out there that was called in. That was thirty-foot high flame length that was seen in front of Java Reef, and I think that's twenty-fifth, right across the river there in the seaside side. By the time we all got there, it all got, uh, reduced down because it spread to dead areas where it was, would let up, where it wasn't spreading anymore, and so we canceled those resources, but they were already coming inside our fire district.
So where was warranted?
They were, they were in front of, well.
I just wondered why we're, I mean, if we're, if we're moving up to, if we're moving up to warrants and we're moving up to Astoria because of a Napa call, then that should be a move up to Astoria.
Correct, and for this fire that we had, um, in Surf Pines, one was obviously there, and then Napa comes and backfills, um, Astoria, and Astoria moves, so it's, it's a domino that either way from there. So they were, they're, almost every fire in the county, almost every fire department's moving and helping.
Realize that.
Yeah. So they have come and given back to what we've given to them.
Thank you, Chief. Of course.
Thank you, guys.
Master of Money?
Okay. Uh, a big thank you to our Budget Committee. Um, I really appreciate all of the questions and comments and professionalism of that committee. Um, you know, many of them are, we, we do funds, and even, uh, many of the ones on there haven't done a lot of budget committees, so I thought that they did a really nice job of respecting each other, but also speaking forward. Uh, I was excited to see some of them actually reach out to some of the, uh, state revenue share grant recipients, uh, or applicants, and ask them really good questions, that I think just, just, they learn things about their community, so I, I really appreciate that with our Budget Committee. Uh, tonight, the city will have the opportunity to issue the final adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget resolutions. Uh, in revenues, there were two franchise fee payments received from Recology in account ten zero 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 six. Uh, Recology's been submitting estimated franchise fee payments due to an IT system outage, uh, that impacted their calculations, so hopefully they have that resolved now. We've got two payments this month, so one of them was a payment to kind of shore things up. There have been several small specialized grants received in place in ten zero three seven in brands, uh, which is under the miscellaneous revenues, and these, you've already heard about through different things, we just finally got all the money for them. One of them was the CIS Public Safety for Police, a CIS recreational immunity for parksites, and a CIS Risk Management Security for some cameras. So they, we put them in that fund. I did create that grant fund miscellaneous, and so I moved up, last month, we had a first responders grant, uh, grant from Clutz County, so I did move, um, that up to that ten zero zero two seven from ten zero zero two one. Uh, in expenditures, there was an audit paid in ten ten forty-six audit, due to, due to some pre-audit work that our auditors do. Um, they come in August, but they had asked for, uh, work up until May, and then we submit that if it helps them just, uh, prepare better. A payment was made in ten ten eighty-one equipment, which was part of the CIS Risk Management Security Grant. A new account was added in ten fifteen thirty-nine postage, um, that's in court, uh, with three officers full-time. Uh, tickets are now on the uptick and requiring, uh, a lot of postage, so when notifications need to go out, a lot of legal notices have to go. Um, and the court assistant and I talked about it, and I think it's enough to go ahead and start their own fund so that we can track that, so we make sure we have enough money from year to year for that. Also, thirty thirty-eight-five water meter, meter replacement was increased, uh, due to a purchase of a meter that was part of the Warranton, uh, Water MOU Agreement. Uh, we had agreed in that agreement that we would replace one of the connection meters, uh, and that's been purchased, and I believe it's been put in.
Thank you. All right, Peter?
A couple of things, um, the Hamilton case, which involved the, the pipe, which we don't own. Um, we have been dismissed from that case. Um, it's moving forward, so we have sitting employees that will still be deposed, and, uh, at this point, it looks like it's gonna go to trial, but, um, we had done the prep work, I had worked with CIS and attended various mediations. Um, we had some negotiations with the plaintiff's attorney that led to us being dismissed. Um, that doesn't mean it'll be the end of it for us. Um, they could bring one, they, they could bring another case against us, uh, but lawyers generally don't like to try cases twice, so my hope would be that, um, we'll continue working with people to see if we can solve these problems, but for, for now, we're not in court. I've gotten phone calls and emails, including one from the county related to annexation. There seems to be a lot of confusion about the annexation laws and rules. So, um, I provided one, uh, email to you. Um, Anthony and I, Anthony did a great job. Um, we collaborated on the first response, and then, um, I provided a response on page two and, and a map on page three to help people understand, um, that the current policy that's favored in the state of Oregon is that all lands inside a UGV that where new construction in the urban surface is, that those will be annexed into the city. It's state land use whole tortean, which is that, uh, development should happen inside cities' urban growth boundaries, and the urban growth boundaries should, should be within city limits. Um, the specific problem that they're trying to address, um, are larger unincorporated areas, like if you're familiar with the Lolo, which is in between Beaverton and Hillsborough, that's not actually a city, it's unincorporated Washington County. And, uh, you basically have a county trying to provide urban services, and they're really not equipped to do that, and then you have people in county, in the county all paying the same tax rate. So oftentimes, you'll have more resources going into one portion of the county and not the other. Um, I am, there may be a jurisdiction that's not requiring annexation for new development requiring urban services, I don't know what it is. I wonder what it would be, though, because every city that I've been doing work with has, um, we did a cherry stem in King City, it was a half-mile long, uh, for two hundred and forty acres, it was a half mile, um, that was a, a half mile from the city. Um, that was approved by the Luba on Friday of last week, so, um, this in the grand scheme of things, I know it's not adjacent to our boundary, but it's, I think, one of the least controversial things that we've done. Um, but we, I think, because the laws around annexations have changed repeatedly since, in the last ten years certainly, um, the loss of voter, city voter approval for, um, for properties to be annexed in the city, uh, that no longer happens, and people can force us to take their properties now. Those are some dramatic changes. So I just wanted to, it, there seems to be people saying we're an outlier, and, and the answers that were not. Our prior position was an outlier position as compared to other cities. So hopefully, we're gonna get out, and, um, people will, um, people will be familiar with the kind of new laws and best practices by the state. And then, um, make some law on Thursday of last week with the Court of Appeals that unfortunately is written in, uh, Manhattan, it won't allow me to refer any other jurisdictions, but, um, it does clarify whether or not, um, things like top plan amendments are, um, can be like appealed to Luba, um, in the city, and the standard review in those cases. So we got, I got a favorable result in another city, but the good news is that, um, I don't know right now, not on what, we don't have any litigation for the first time in a little while.
Correct.
I've got a comment. And it has to do with Surf Pines, I mean, with Palisades property.
Yeah.
Okay, so this guy wants to annex into the city. He's the only one that wants to annex into the city. He's four lots from the northern boundary, he's two lots from the Gulf Coast going west. Why is it that, that our police department should have to deal with one individual lot in there? When, when the rest of the community just voted this weekend not to annex into the city here?
So I think that my understanding is, and this is based on best practices in the state, my understanding of what you as a council wanted was to clarify that new construction in our UGV that receives urban services, they annex into the city, and then I was asked to have a conversation with the president of the HOA, um, related to whether all of them would want to annex or not. And I had that conversation, it was a cordial conversation, I had a less cordial conversation with the president's wife at a later date. Um, and I, you know, I, I never know why people would vote the way they would. Uh, my analysis is that that neighborhood is in the, is it called the Sunset Recreation District?
Sunset.
Yeah, which is like, their fixed rate's like eighty-seven cents, and I think they have another levy out, our fixed rate is like a dollar and one-half cent, and plus they pay one and a half times water, plus they pay the rate for the rural protection, fire protection. So in my mind, they would be saving money by annexing into the city, and they would have the benefit of, uh, receiving police services. So I, you know, I think they don't want to be governed, but, um, obviously, but we were like suggesting something that would have saved that money. Um, but they, they, they didn't want to, and it was, um, I think, a lot, a lot, quite a few people, uh, were concerned with it, and I had given John the information, I, I trust that he had provided the information to his neighbors, and then they voted the way they voted. There were four other lots in that neighborhood, the lots that are referred to as the Murphy Property, which at one point was a consideration for a fire station until it wasn't, and, um, those may develop, so, um, and then we have the other properties that are in the, um, behind the gate, that's the name of the game.
Highlands.
Highlands, yeah, there, I think there are lots in the Highlands as well, and I don't know whether Highlands would want to annex, the collective, they would want to annex or not.
So are we still pursuing this one guy?
If you tell us you don't want us annexing new constructions in our UGV that, um, receive urban services from the city, then we will reverse course?
Well, it just seemed to me that, I mean, the guy bought the lot in a private, privately-owned streets and everything else like that, and then he wants to save a few bob, you know, and, and put the city of Gearheart on out. As far as police protection and fire protect, I mean, the fire department's gonna show up there anyway.
So if we're talking.
We just built on a five-and-a-half-million-dollar house.
Right, so this is, this is specific to one lot. So what I would just say is, what do you have in area inside a city's urban growth boundary that develops? It's not, it doesn't always develop. It's all, not always the lot that's adjacent to the city that develops first. It could be eight lots down or twelve lots down. It could be eight lots down or 12 lots down. So almost every city I know says, okay, if, when that develops, if it needs urban services, that annexing into the city is the condition of receiving those urban services, which means that that lot is then contributing to the city by paying city taxes, whereas the existing owners of the, of either of those neighborhoods are not. So the, they're, they are using our streets and our sidewalks and our parks, and if you ask, and I know people that, I know several people that have lived in each, and if you ask them where their beach houses, they do not say unincorporated lots of county, they say Girard. So they have a choice as to whether they want to annex into the city or not, and for now, that choice is no. But if we want other new construction, if you as a council want other new construction to contribute to the city by paying city property taxes, then we're well within our legal rights to require annexation. And I just want to point out, we've done this in the, we've done this in the most efficient way that would save people money, because if you look at Lake Oswego or Milwaukee, they require them to annex the property before they'll even process the application, which adds two months.
What about Lake Oswego?
I'm giving you examples because people like to receive examples. Other, most other cities require annexation prior to processing the permit. We didn't do that because it saves the people two months and dollars. If you, we didn't charge an annexation fee for them to annex in the city. Other jurisdictions charge an annexation fee to annex in the city because it takes staff time. If you instruct us to come up with an annexation fee, we could do it, but for the people out there, like, acting like we're criminals for asking for someone to do something that every jurisdiction does, I, I'm confused by it, frankly. And again, we've tried to be very pro, we've tried to be as efficient as possible.
Okay, Chad. Who's the building official on the, on the sites up there in Palisades?
Leonard Brown, Department of Justice.
Okay, that's not counting.
No, there is our urban services area, we're required to provide all their urban services. We're required to provide planning, we process all their applications.
Okay, so basically, Peter, then, when they, when they get their plans together and everything like that, City of Girard Building Department gets money from them.
Just like any other person building in the city.
Right, okay. It just would seem to me that this guy is going to be, he is going to be chastised by the rest of the community over there. I don't even know why this is even brought up here. He bought into a, to a private community.
Right, so it goes back to a policy choice for you as a council, and your staff will do whatever you want. If you want a new construction that is inside our urban growth boundary that receives city services and goes through city planning to annex into the city as part of that, which is what most jurisdictions do, you can tell us to, if you don't want us to do that, and you say, well, they, they, they want, we don't want to take any of that, then we'll, we'll remove that as a condition.
She wears, so the, so the, so the brand new house, the building up there, the stuff on Patricia Ann Lane?
No, yeah, we didn't, we didn't get to this idea until after you began construction.
The laws on this have changed.
I don't care what the law says, okay? It's what's right and what's wrong in this community.
Right, and so what I said is, we will do whatever majority of you want us to do.
And we've already discussed this, right? And we've already directed you to do this.
Off of your prior direction.
Okay, well, that's, we've beaten this horse enough, let's move on.
I don't think we've beaten the horse at all, to tell you the truth, Mayor.
Okay, why don't you go on up?
Why did, why did you attend the Palisades homeowners association meeting?
They're not part of Girard, and I wasn't invited. Did you attend? You're a counselor, so don't throw things around that can come back and bite you, okay, Preston? We're moving on. All right, so, anything else, Peter?
If you have any other questions, let me know.
Okay, any other questions for Peter? Chad?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, so as you've heard about court dates and tickets, things are getting a little bit busier around Girard. Now that we are fully staffed, things are happening on Highway 101 and other places around. So we have added, doubled our efforts, added a court date, hence getting in the way of the July 1st date that I didn't quite recall earlier. And also, I have allocated some staff time. Christie is going to be assisting Angelina with court matters in regards to the paperwork database, ticket tracking and that sort of thing. So Christie's spending a little bit more time with there. Our officers are spending a little bit more time with people out, and so we have an additional court date that we are running through for the city of Girard, it's very busy. So I just want to let you know that was happening, no decisions for you to make at this point, and I'll keep you up on how things are going there. I too attended the class group kickoff and the follow-up meetings that we've had with Councillor Dana and Councillor Preston. The meetings are going well, class group is getting to know the city a little bit, they're getting to know our fire station a little bit, and then they're also beginning to work on a possible ideas for press proposals for architectural services. So they're going to start going through those RFPs, take a look at what it is the city of Girard needs, and I'll have more to, to report to the city council as that gets a little bit closer. Covert mediation update, you got that from Mr. Watts. We met with the state, just give me the highlights here, we met with the state, county, and local stakeholders to discuss the Fourth of July game plan. We had a group of about 13 different police officers and firefighters here in the city. We did that with, the county wasn't able to make it on this one, but we did have representatives from Seaside State Police, County Police, Oregon Park and Recreation Department. What we're doing is getting together and talking about the Fourth of July event and making sure that we're coordinated. It was an excellent meeting, and we need to do that on these meetings that are on these larger events that we have moving forward. The next portion of this is, we're going to start talking again about the Fourth of July signage that we put around town, and we are going to be talking about handling of garbage, whether that be through a volunteer effort after the Fourth of July, and then also what the city can do to help alleviate some of the stress of garbage that we have around town. And I think last year was a good improvement, and I'm thinking this year is going to be even more so sans any major issues that might occur. We're going to have our whole crew on, both in the fire department and the police department, and city staff also will be on handling the Fourth of July, make sure things run smoothly. Some city staff, no. Yes, Dan?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
If people are doing illegal fireworks, this is kind of maybe directed to Officer Brown too, doing illegal fireworks in neighborhoods near us, do you want us to call you, or what's that look like?
Generally, you should have them call us, yeah. I think you're technically to get that Fourth of July, June pre-visiting. Yeah, it's on the fireworks in the area, it's small.
They're illegal fireworks.
They're illegal.
Right. Flying or exploding.
And that would be the 5037-386311 number, less than emergency, like somebody is supposed to be hurt or fired or something like that, than the 911.
Okay, I just didn't, I don't want, this happens every year in my neighborhood, by the way, I just didn't want to bother you guys if you thought that there would be more important things that you'd be doing, so.
That's the sort of thing we're here for. I, let's see here, I attended the, with the mayor, we attended the Girard homeowners association meeting, that went well, they had a few questions, and how about this, is that they're reprinting the Girard member book, so keep an eye out for that as soon. Court resurfacing for the pickleball and the courts as they are now are looking like we're going to be resurfacing at the end of June. If that's the case, there's going to be probably about three or four days that the courts will be closed while we're doing that, and that is through a grant that the city has as well. Generator project, we're still working on that, finalizing some costs, and this is the generator that'll be up at the reservoir site. Of note, we have the election November 2024, candidate filings begin June 5th, last day is August 27th at 5:00 PM. Hazardous waste disposal event is January, or excuse me, June 15th, here in 10 days from 9:00 to 2:00 on Williamsport Road up at the, near the transfer station in Astoria, and then June 10th, the city office will close Windage in 9:00 PM. Less than any other purpose, that's all I got for it.
Any questions? Move on to visitors. Chris Carey and Dan Blue from Recology will go over their rating review.
Hi, so Chris Carey, I think I'm going to share a screen with you, potentially, but I don't know.
You should be able to.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, guys, I appreciate your time, Mayor Smith, council members. My name's Chris Carey, I'm the general manager for Recology of Oregon, so that's all of our proper, all of our business units in Oregon, so that's three compost facilities in the, in the northern Oregon area, eight transfer stations, some of those are the big ones, Portland Metro Center, the hotel. So a lot of resources that we can bring from there, so the sites here, we're based out of, out of little Warrenton is where our shop is and all the trucks are, and then we have a satellite site, and maybe a, we're going to do, Daniel Wheeler, Nancy, parts of Tull County, they're all managed by, who's about to present to you, Katie Arcey.
Not Dan Blue.
Not Dan Blue.
I was kind of confused.
Okay, so since we're going to go over a larger overview of Recology as a company, it started out on the West Coast in the Bay Area. One really great thing about Recology, we have 100% employee, and what that means is all of the profits that we make come back to us employees every single one. There's not one person that owns more than 1% of the company, so it's great to have everything come back to employees, it stays in the cities, it stays with them, it all comes back to us, it's just a fantastic thing. We're all proud to be employee owners, which we do want to put our best into the company because the better the company does, the better that we do. So Recology has over 3,700 employees, we serve 137 communities, 26 collection companies, 24 transfer stations, 14 criteria recovery facilities, which are ours, and we have eight organics processing centers. Here in Oregon specifically, Chris kind of went over that a little bit, we have two transfer stations, one in Astoria and McMinnville. We have three compost facilities in McMinnville, Osville, and North Plains, and then, Chris will know what we need to do in Portland. Something that's near and dear to my heart is the culture we have here at Recology. I came up here 13 years ago, kind of when Recology bought it, I came here specifically for the job, I started out as a driver because it provided guaranteed work, there's always garbage, there's a 401K, there's benefits, I was a single mom, it just was a great company to come in and work for. And then the opportunity I have, start with as a driver, thinking of recycle, to now operate as manager of the northern compost operations. So our employees have an avenue of, you know, bettering themselves if they want to, like to come from within. So right now, we are fully staffed, which I don't know if last year, you remember, we were struggling so hard, I was on a truck, my predecessor was also on a truck, we couldn't seem to get employees on, so we were able to provide a living wages and kind of work through that, and now we're fully staffed, we have some really great employees. So all the drivers that provide service in your area, there's quite a few, by add up all their service, all the years they've worked, about 97 years of experience riding the trucks around here. So it's really kind of a great thing we have going on right now, we're really proud to be working for this company and the employees we have. So we have 45 employees right now, which is fantastic. I just love that we're providing this great, wonderful place to work for the people and the citizens of communities. So we have drivers, mechanics, equipment operators, because we run the Astoria transfer station as well, the support team, customer service, we do have one customer, two customer service jobs that work right out of our Warrenton office, so it's really great to have some people here that can attest to what goes on here, because as you know, Girard, the coastal region is kind of a specialized thing that we provide with the rental houses, the wind is always a huge factor, fun to play with. Some of the things we do here, we do change things at the Classic County Fair because education and outreach is something that we really want to do. Divergent is our main goal, we're not a transfer, we're not a random company or diversion company, so the more we get outreach through, and you get on proper recycling, the better. We do the salt cleanups, and we do the, we just had the Girard cleanup event on Earth Day, so that was kind of, kind of a fun thing on a Saturday, which we always get a driver to come volunteer and work on that day to provide the drop boxes and to work it, and make sure everything's going that it's supposed to be there. Oh, and then one of the things that's really great that we do is our Coastal Oregon Artist in Residency, I don't know if you guys have heard of that at all. So we have local artists that apply every year, be part of the program, and we staff a pick two out of those, and then we do, they have three months to salvage out of the transfer station and they make art, and then we put on a show for them in the first art walk in October in downtown Astoria. This year, we were lucky enough to be at Booth at the Crab Fest, and you can kind of see it set up right there. We have past artists come in and showcase some of their stuff, and just give them another object to sell, sell their art. And I think that's it, pretty?
Yeah, so let's go into the rave area, so what I'll do is I'll give you an overview, and then I'm going to throw a curveball at you, and then we'll talk about it, and then we'll discuss racing, look, it was good to that, but I'm going to do kind of a high overview of these bulletins here. So we're coming back in with a 3.2% rate increase, CPI, March to March, August is 3.9, so we're slightly under that, that's how we gauge, or that's the marker for us in terms of our franchise agreement, how it's written, that marker is a March to March, that's what I put it in. We're proposing this rate adjustments, it has to do with our franchise agreement, how it's written, an allowable margin, it's a, it's a cost ratio, we make between 88 and 92, and if we fall out of those, we come back in. Also, we try to target the center just to maintain rates, we try to avoid it where we don't go and see it for a couple of years, and then back, it's a pretty big increase and it's out of our control, swallow for everybody, so we're trying to maintain a level cost structure. The impact to the number one service level here is 75 cents more a month, so it's not a lot to the consumer, but it adds up in terms of, for us, in terms of how we maintain our trucks or fuel. The wages were a big issue, where we retain folks, and we attract a new talent, to get bloods and seats, as we like to say, so it's really 72 cents a week. On this screen, you'll see kind of the way, the current rate at 2345, that top line, 32 gallon recycling, proposed increase is 3.2%, the monthly impact is 75 cents, and the new rate goes to 2420, that's how that looks, and then it shows you the other side's rates. What I want you to do is the curveball and throw that in, and Councilmember Fack, will you help us a little bit with this, almost eight months ago, maybe nine, where we got you out of the truck?
Yeah.
And you saw what it takes to go to the side yards versus make a curb service, an automated truck with an arm. And so usually, what we'll see is a differential of that type of service, because it costs almost three times, four times as much to go do that, we have to get out of the truck, and you have set it up for automated service. Now, the nature of co-service is, we see it in every city, you have second homes for folks, and you have rentals, and so they're not here always to put their stuff out, so there's, we're not trying to eliminate that service, we know you all need that service here, but it hasn't, it hasn't been burdensome rate, and what you'll see here is it doesn't really burden it in a way that's applicable. The 90 gallon cart has a good differential, it's a 53% increase in rate. increase in rate when you decide you wanna get your curb here can picked up at the side of your house. Uh, if you don't, you get a smaller rate of fifty nine ninety nine versus the sixty one ninety one, or no, I'm sorry, that's wrong, that's um, it's the thirty nine fifteen versus the fifty nine ninety nine, you'll see on that far left column, that's the current difference between having your car picked up in the street or us coming and getting it. So that differential works, because it's enough of a monetary incentive to get folks to make a decision, should I do this? What uh, what is a real incentive is that thirty two gallon, if you have a thirty two gallon curb side, it's twenty three dollars and forty five cents, and if you have the turn, I can't see that, uh, you have twenty three ninety five, it's only a difference of seventy seven cents. So when people call, it's like, why not, I'll keep it on the side of my, my house, please, I don't know why the rates were set up like that, we don't, we just wanna fix it. And what this does, it does a lot of things, it keeps longevity in our drivers. Uh, you know, we have some folks that are around a lot longer now, and do a great job and understand the business because we brought in automated trucks, and they don't have to go in the backyards and pick stuff up and swing it. Uh, but this one's kind of a killer, and we've, we're seeing it in some other cities that are um, taking a look at increasing that rate. But that's a, that's a big jump, we would, we would, we're, we're proposing to increase uh, the thirty two gallon side yard rate. Uh, I'll show you what that looks like here. Um, to go up to that same type of differential that we see in the nineties, so I'm, I'm gonna propose some options for you tonight. One is, option one is to approve the three point two percent adjustment like you did last year in a similar fashion, because it's a rate increase. And we come to show you how it works, franchise operating issue, that's, that's B A U, that's business as usual. Um, option two is we modify the proposed rates, and we drop the three point two percent increase that you would put across everybody. Regardless of service, that's commercial, residential, or your industrial, or drop boxes. And we drop that to one and a half percent, and we propose raising the thirty two gallon side yard service to, by fifty three percent, and I think it goes up like a load of bucks. And then we, what we try to do is figure out, uh, what, what then happens is people that don't really need it to be curb side, like non-renters and non-second home folks. They're gonna go, okay, I don't wanna pay that, I'm gonna put it out the curb. And uh, that helps uh, level it out, but there's some attrition there in terms of revenue, that means we won't make as much as we used to. Uh, and so we, we factor in some attrition, we know people will switch. And so we factor that into this one percent, one point two percent increase versus a three point two.
And I think I asked last year, um, you would, you, you work out some kind of system for the people that physically have some type of thing, the age that they require that service.
Right.
They're not gonna be penalized with the people that are just, I say, I take my garbage out, and I don't wanna have my neighbor drink my garbage can.
Yeah, the vacation homes and the second homes, or, and every once in a while you see someone just watch you. Like they're just happily watching you go in and get your garbage, your garbage can, which is fine, you know, but at the seventy seven cent rate, it was, it's you don't.
It's not much you can say to, to, it's not designed the way it was supposed to.
So would, would, if they, explain to me again, just so I remember, I can articulate it if I get a question. How does that program work, or how do they find out about that, how do they sign up for, if they, if they are physically unable to take their garbage can out and bring it back?
So they call in, and they um, ask about it, or they say, you know, I'm disabled, um, or elderly or whatever, then that's conversation we have with them, and then usually when it's when the stat, I mean, you know, that's going on, that's a, you know, you know, charge comes. It's, it's in the normal curb side, right?
And there might be a site that's in the conversation, uh, person, just like make sure there's no able-bodied person, that kind of thing, but we don't press it, right? It's, we, it's just not a great conversation, but most people will do the right thing. So we typically go on that issue, people press harder, we're like, yeah, but uh, so essentially, and then option three is, if you want more discussion, then we can come back, and we can, we, you guys can visually, between meetings and talk through it. But essentially, it's instead of a three point two percent increase across the board, it's a much smaller one. And then the, the burden of the increase goes on about a hundred and sixty four customers, and so now the side yard, and the majority of them are, uh, we know are, you know, vacation levels. Who are probably in a better position to, to absorb that type of increase, because they will just pass it through, right? Uh, now there's folks that may, that may need it, and we would give a valuation, just so uh, uh, hurting somebody that otherwise shouldn't be.
Yeah, I was really amazed how often that on my red line, how they had to get out and walk up hilly driveways.
Yeah.
And some of them had like four garbage cans, and need to have to go up and get them and bring them down, and then go up again and bring them down. And he had explained to me that sometimes some of your drivers walk ten miles a day. Driving.
Yeah.
So that was really informative, and I was very surprised we could charge extra for that.
Yeah, and you know what happens is, you'll get a driver that sees another route opens, that doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then he's in churn, which creates customer service issue, you're having, while you went on the same drive earlier.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to clean it up, it's something that we were doing in uh, right now, we've created a, that's for them. For council meeting, because they have a very similar issue, it's the, it's the cities that have the high rental and the second home. That we see this, and for whatever reason, we never built the rates that way from the get-go. And when Katie and I took over, it was like, we're beating this franchise down, and we need to do something, a moment is, we gotta get the rates incentivized in the right way. Knowing that the coast is always, and when I say the coast, I mean, everybody on the coast, they're always gonna have side yard needs because of just the nature of having homes on coast, right? So we don't wanna eliminate it, we just want we don't want the folks to live here to subsidize that type of service for folks that don't, if that makes sense?
I was really surprised at the difference in, in the cost between doing it, not doing it, so, you know, if I might spend you know, that much money, then, you know, maybe I'd do it, and it's not fair to everybody else to burden them, the people that want that service to, to pay for it, right?
And this is, this is the time to do it during rate season, and it, and it helps get the burden, like getting it down to one point two percent instead of uh, the full, full amount. So if you're a curveball, sorry, but uh, and we've talked, we talked a little bit about it last year, and said, hey, we're gonna take a look at this and and try to get some of you out on trucks so you see it, so I appreciate that.
You guys should all go out, it was an experience I'll never forget.
So any questions for that?
Thank you.
So uh, Dan, who's uh, really good to actually put a proposed motion if you want it. He's very ambitious, uh, and then we'll just talk about, uh, if you have any questions, we'll, we'll leave you with this information, Dan. We'll go from there, we appreciate that you guys gave us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for coming down and explaining, thanks a lot.
Katie, what's your last name again?
Hardisty.
Hardisty?
Yeah, Hard, E S T Y, common spelling, right?
Yeah.
What was my driver's name again?
Shannon.
Shannon, he spoke so well of the company.
Yeah.
He loves working with you guys.
Nice, Shannon is now the lead driver, so he's like one step away from supervisor, which is, which is nice to see, because he knows all the routes, he's been doing this forever.
Yeah, he, yeah, he was great.
Yeah, he's one of those guys, you wanna clone, just someone else.
Tell him to clean up his truck.
Just gotta call the helper.
No, he was awesome.
That's a garbage.
Right. Okay, so do we wanna just make a, a motion to go with the one point two?
Or do we have to do that later? Forty two hours. Yes.
I move to modify the Recology twenty twenty four proposed rate adjustment to increase rates for all services one point two percent. And raise thirty two gallon side yard service rates fifty three percent.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? I believe you got it.
Right, yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then, uh, if you got it, I hear you're having discussions about cleaner fourth of July, that's kinda what we do, so just let us know.
Well, I think, I think last replaced some nineties around downtown, and just tried to help with that, but that always gets, oh, yeah.
We'll be in touch.
I'm gonna touch on a little black right. I wanna.
I'll hear you.
Uh, I'll give you my part, uh, I touched on something real good, we did, we're, I think you were at the county meeting, um, we brought up the recycling for the county. So I just wanted you to know that some of your unincorporated areas that are, you're like, corner gardens, stuff, will be getting recycling service, so that they don't have currently right now, so anyways.
Corner garden does have recycling.
So the, the west side of Corner Gardens does, the east side, I think it's a subscription, and then the north end of it doesn't, and then um, some of the subscription areas could be private. Um, and the kind of stuff out there, it's a subscription right now, but that'll be changed for everybody from your heart to Oregon will have.
Entire class of county that we service, which is almost all, is gonna get curb side recycling every other week. Yeah.
And that's glass included in the cardboard? Just wondering, just wondering. Okay. Okay, do you have one more question?
I have a question.
You have a question too?
Well, I just, this report comes to our council members, and not all of them are always uh, financial lawyers, and so uh, they're often confused by what, they, they don't even know what operating margins are.
Sure.
Uh, so I know this is valuable.
Yeah, we.
Helpful, but I, I, I don't know that they always understand what it means.
And so we, we agree with you, so um, with myself, Dan, who we, we keep speaking of this up here. And Katie, and then I find it seems, but there's a lot of stuff that just, that we need to be on there for everybody, and then we can do whatever you need, based on whatever questions you have, but we're gonna, there's, I think it just evolved over decades, and people kept adding things instead of taking stuff off, so we're gonna work it clean. And it, it got messy, because we take all of our expenses and our revenue, and we allocate it across all jurisdictions, and we have high inflation, that we, that we operate out of warranty, and we allocate it out based on the number of customers. Uh, and so it, it can get really confusing, because there's columns that data, or items that data. So we're, we're looking to clean that up, so it makes a lot more sense, but that's all.
Chair, we'll be next time when you're explaining.
Um, I had an assistant ask about compost pickup, you guys wanna have a comment on that, or?
Uh, so we do the yard debris box here, that we call, I don't know.
No, she meant, she meant.
Compost, actually, of her, oh, curb side, well, that is a discussion that you all would have to have with each other, if that's something you wanted to have in the city.
And, and when you say compost, do you mean food waste, or do you mean yard debris, grass, and termites?
That's a really good question.
Um, because that's, we do that, but.
What is that, Astoria has something, don't they?
Yeah, um, and it's, it's kind of a boutique artisanal uh, program, if you will, and it's not robust, uh, it's not anything that we will allow. What, what, what needs to be required is that, one, we have to transport our compost, once you put food in it, it becomes, uh, in yard debris, it becomes uh, type three compost. And it has a whole different process to go through, because now it's gotta be, right? And so there's lots of rules around that, and there's uh, prohibited facilities that have to take it, it actually is defined the solid ways, once you put food into it, I, type three. So um, long story short, if the proximity to those facilities is pretty far away, it becomes expensive, so um, we're looking at some stuff that I can talk to you about, there, there's little baby digesters that we can get, and we can maybe look at how many times we get with that, and that sort of starts a program. But um, I think if you want it, you let us know, and then we're probably gonna say, hey, let's go talk to some other cities. Because we're gonna need volumes to make this work, right, in that city.
Do you, did, I don't know if you know this question, so you can tell me, I don't know. Um, in those kind of programs in cities, do you see an increase in rodents, or any type of activity like that?
Not getting picked up, um, well, so in the city of Portland, your garbage is picked up every other week. And your recycling and your compost is picked up weekly. Yeah, so they turn it upside down, and it works, because people are like, I, what, how, how am I gonna get it picked up?
Right.
So uh, no, there's a process that, you know, if it hits the ground at the transfer station, it's gotta be reloaded, it's gotta be in the facility 24 hours, so as soon as you, as soon as we dump it, it's, it's out of facility within forty eight hours. And it's, it's getting ground up, and it's getting put on uh, mass beds, where we push air or pull air through, and in sixty days, we've got beautiful compost. But we, you need a lot, you need a lot of people to make it work, just like recycling, and the only reason that the county is now able to get that recycling out of the world, suburban areas. It's because of the density and all the folks that are using curb sub programs now. It gets us the volume and the efficiencies that we need to take the work. So if we were just to do uh, gear, it would be a, a truck for half a day, once a week, probably, to pick up compost, and that's uh, that's still pretty heavy cost, or high cost per home. More homes, we split that out.
And to be clear, we would have to do it for the entire city, you couldn't just say, well, we, we have three people that want, so come, come do it for the three people.
So you can do what you'd like, uh, and we'll present you with rates, and when some people say, I want some script and rates, and then if only ten people sign up, it's really expensive for those, don't you?
So in order for it to be a viable program, we need.
You would add it on to, if somebody wants garbage service, now they get a recycling card, and now they get a compost card, it's part of the entire service. That's how we just did it with.
Yes.
So just the yard debris isn't hugely expensive, it's when you have food.
Right.
So when it becomes compost, these yard debris plus food, that, that becomes hugely expensive, because there are only certain facilities that are able to take it.
So if you wanted a curb side yard debris program, which is right now you set the box, correct? Um, that's easier to do, if that's what they're asking, I'd like to get a yard debris cart, I would say yard debris. Because if you say compost, people think food waste, or at least more and more people think food waste. Because of the programs, they're, they're growing immensely in the metro reaches. And you have a lot of folks who come down here from that region that wanna have those same type of services, and that's probably really big here, so.
Maybe, maybe you know this, maybe you don't, how many people in our area, we get stickers that allows to take our yard debris down? How many, do you see a lot of Dear Heart, Dear Heart people, is there anybody who can track that, to know how many people do that?
At transfer stations.
We see on the transfer stations, they have a little clean in their windows, um, that goes out to every permanent residence. So if it's a vacation home, they don't get one, you have to be living there as a, at, at the home that you're getting, um, being cleaned for.
And how do you determine that?
Uh, well, usually you can tell on the account, because the account will have, the building address is the same as the residence address. So a lot of times, when you have this like a homes, it's yours, that they, the year are addressed with the building and all that, is like a it's a polling address, or a California address, or an Idaho address, and then you know that whoever's paying the bill doesn't actually live here, so.
Thank you.
On the summary rate sheet, there isn't yard debris on here, right?
No, it's the, no, because we don't have it as, as a curb side service, that voucher is, is baked into your rate. So if that makes sense, I might get too granular, but the yard debris that we pick up here gets into the, all the expenses that we factor into your services. So like everybody, single piece of their rate is paid for that, so that's all.
For that?
For that yard debris box up here.
And, and the cleans that you get there.
And what, what's, would the cost, just all our differential be between us paying for that versus us paying for curb side yard debris?
Uh, I have to go back and look, um, but I can, I can get back.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, just, just look at it.
Some documents from when the city considered this before. Uh, this was a topic that came up some time ago, and I think the rate increase was a little bit provocative, and people decided, or the council then decided not to go forward with it, and we might have some more information.
Yeah, we can, we can do it, we can do it, it's really good, uh, performance, so it's we spread it across, and we know, I know the yard re- rates, it's down the road. Uh, so again, car cost, and it would be the cost of a truck and a driver.
Yeah.
Now, we would look at, do we have, we want an existing, or have, that's something similar in the city, and they just, they incorporate yours.
I, I.
Yeah.
So I do wanna, so we've been talking to Seaside about um, curb side yard and last, and glass, because when you have both of them together, that's when you get the most efficiency, and the most waiting for your buttons, when you do both, so I would encourage you, if you're, if you're thinking about yard debris, that also. So I would encourage you, if you're thinking about yard debris, also consider having curb side glass service. Because it just, when it goes together, it's just a lot more efficient and you'll get the most benefit.
Well, it'd be interesting to see some new versions of this.
Yes, and are you talking about one week would be yard debris, another week would be glass, and we can utilize the same truck and the same driver, but a different stream? Which, that's why it makes it similar, or easier to absorb because of the two screens.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Here's a very easy thing.
You do.
So.
All right, so we're gonna move over to public communications, written in oral. Anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest not on the agenda may do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to comment electronically must be submitted by email to thecityrecorder@info@cityofgearhart.com. No later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. Are there? Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time on the subject not on the agenda? I see none. Are there any hands raised? On Zoom? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to correspondence. Everyone's got a copy of all the correspondence we got, is.
There was one that's a little different here. There was the. The attachment that the councilor Sharon went ahead and gave us, and that was attached with CIS document. Sharon did not submit the CIS document, to be clear. So that, her document on the backside of one sentence that I provided. Having to do with heritage tree protection. On the front, then we received one, two. Three additional letters that were on your desk, Audrey Lee, Jason Baby, and Robert Steinman. Then we have just your permission to CIS insurance services. A coverage statement.
We were dismissed from that case.
Okay.
The CIS has been dismissed?
Yes, that's the Hamilton matter, where they're going to trial, but not with us.
That's great. Okay, so the tree ornament inclusion is about the heritage tree protection. And we are going to be talking about that. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. What?
On down the line?
On down the line, yes. And we can, do you wanna talk about it at that time? Okay. Then we'll move over and down the line to Resolution 995, a resolution adjusting water rates in the city of Gearheart.
Right, mayor and council. Take a step at this and just see if there's any things incorrect. Correct. So in the past year, City Gearheart approved a 50% water rate increase, implemented water conservation block price, improved much needed water ordinance uptake. That address processes the galaxies. These changes stem from recommendations made with that 2023 water rate study. It was the goal of the council to revisit annual water rate increases prior to budget approval. And here we are. Budget process determined a 10% increase period for the upcoming fiscal year in order to keep future sustainability on track. Your options are to approve Resolution 995, make changes, or take other action. Staff recommends council motion to approve Resolution 995. And we have a recommended motion that forms below. Legal analysis is there, financial analysis is below. And I can go through that if you would like, unless the council is familiar with this topic.
I'm familiar.
I'm good.
So we put the budget together assuming a 10%, assuming that we would hopefully be able to get a 10% increase. So the water budget increased 19.75% for next year. For all of the reasons, salary, labor, labor, you know, just like distribution lines, all of the things that continue to go up. This year, we had a little bit of a bonus in the water department because we were given the 10%, or given 15%, which was more than the 10% recommended by our water rate surveys, but. It allowed us an opportunity to make up for lost revenues that we've had for all the years. We also have a water transfer from the reserve fund. So we will be able to, and the warranted rates did not go up like we thought last this year. We thought that they were going to increase us, so we have in the budget or in, out of district rates in '23, '24, and they didn't. So we get two little bonuses this year, free, we get 15%. The possible water reserve transfer to get us back up, and. The warranted water rate's not going up. Personnel costs increased 5.35%, material services estimated to increase 8.25%. Plus, we are budgeting for the first time in ending fund balance, an unappropriated ending fund balance, because we should have. Highly recommended by. Waters, federalists, that we have three months of operating expenses that carry over in case something happens. So we need the 10% in order to keep that fund moving forward and to meet the goals that we need to.
And achieve our 90-day operating.
Correct, it'll, it'll allow, should allow us to transfer at least 40,000, and also. Meet our obligations and keep that for less operating.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any discussion needed? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 995 to increase the water rates in tapages in Gearheart by 10% for fiscal year 2024, 2025. And I need this repealed for Resolution 991.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution granting budget appropriation transfers?
So Resolution 996, municipal budgets are approved by appropriations. And what is an appropriation? An appropriation is a limitation, so. An expenditure of public money may not be made for any purpose in an amount greater than the amount appropriated. So the budget is done in categories, we do a resolution in categories, and we are not supposed to. Spend more than that appropriated amount. However, the state does allow some exceptions. And Oregon budget law does provide a legal way to adjust budgets after adoption through what's called an appropriation transfer. So an appropriation transfer allows municipalities to move appropriations from the budget between existing categories. So we are proposing Resolution 996. The resolution must state the need for the transfer, the purpose of the expenditure, and the amount of the transfer. This allows us to revise the budget this year, the 2023, 2024. Doesn't change the bottom line of the budget. All we're doing is taking appropriations from different categories and moving them around and adjusting them where they're needed. Budgets are never exact, so this is a very common thing that happens. We passed Resolution 987 last year where we adopted and made appropriations. It looks similar to the resolution that we'll be approving later for next year's. Our actual expenditures have varied from budgeted anticipated expenditures. And so we are asking to transfer the, make these changes. Explanation for the needed transfers within the City of Gearheart's budget appropriations include. We had an extension of the contracted services provided by the Klaasen County Sheriff's Office due to coverage needed during the training period. Of a newly hired police officer. When we put the budget together last year, we didn't have a. Officer, and we didn't know how long it was going to take. We knew it was gonna cost some money, but we didn't know how much. So we ended up needing that coverage for this whole year, so that line item. Needs some, some funds. Capital outlay for equipment that enhances police and community safety. We have a new police chief. A new police chief has different expectations and different philosophies. On what safety in equipment is needed. So we've seen some changes and some purchases in their budget. Increased personnel costs for the redistribution of the planning, building, planning, court assistance, full-time equivalency due to workload requirements. So in July, I mentioned in our thing that we had to adjust that time. Because she is spending just about as much time doing planning as she's doing building. And when we budgeted, we had her doing more building because we just weren't sure. That's a fairly new position. This is only the second year with it in, going into the third year. So we did some adjustments, so we need to. Transfer some personnel services to planning, because we didn't quite have enough money in there. And an increased contract service provided by a third-party building official. This one, Angelina and I talked about it, our building department's been doing well. At this point, if we had a low month, we would have enough money to cover appropriations, but we just don't know. And we have some potentially large homes coming up again and projects. So we wanna just make sure that we have enough appropriations to pay our building inspector.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for justine? Someone wanna make a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution 996, I wrote, granting budget appropriation transfers.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, now a resolution for the City of Gearheart budget.
997.
9, thank you. Chad?
I'm gonna let our treasurer take this one, if you don't mind, mayor.
So a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. So you guys went through the process through the budget committee of allocating funds. State revenue funds have lots of different, we get cigarette tax, we get lots of different state revenue shares. But in order to get them, the Oregon Department of Administrative Services requires cities to. Log in to their website and to authorize and to produce a resolution. That says that they are eligible to receive the funds, and that it has been recorded and legally. Opened to the public to make comments on those. So we have done all of those requirements. This resolution outline is from the state of Oregon, and this is just a minor housekeeping thing. In order to make sure that we get all of those essential revenues.
So would you like us to have someone?
I can read it if you would.
Yeah, that would be great.
So a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Whereas the share of certain revenues of the state of Oregon are appropriated among and distributed to cities as for ORS 221, 770. Revenue sharing to cities, and whereas the City of Gearheart has met the requirements to receive the funds. And whereas the City of Gearheart has allowed the public an opportunity to provide written and oral comment. At a budget committee meeting, which was May 14th, 2024, and a city council meeting, June 5th, 2024, where the budget was being discussed. And whereas this resolution is necessary to receive state revenues, and therefore it be thereby resolved, hereby resolved. That pursuant to ORS 221, 770, the City of Gearheart hereby allows to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2024, 2025. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately after its taxes write the city council and approval of the year.
Can I get a motion?
I move to re-adopt Resolution 997, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? All right, moving on. This is the budget. Resolution adopting the City of Gearheart budget for 2024, 2025. Imposing taxes, categorizing taxes, and making appropriations for the City of Gearheart.
So this is a summation of the budget, and nothing in here has changed since the approval of the budget committee. No numbers have been altered or changed. Again, it is. In a format that is required by the state of Oregon, and it is outlined in appropriations by category. And then in our general by organizational program. I did put a possible recommendation, and it needs to be. If you decide to adopt the budget, then it needs to be, all of those elements seem to be in that. Motion.
Okay, where is your?
I put it, and everybody, it's right there in the end carry on the top. Here at the end near table.
Thank you. All in favor.
What is add valor? I don't know, please.
The, what do you say?
It's on the second page, right after the 998, the first sentence.
Taxes amount is based on the value of the transaction of the property.
So what does add valor mean?
That would be on the value of the holdings.
Okay, thank you.
It's a misnomer, because it's on the assessed value, not the own value, but that's therefore in more required uses.
Thank you.
So you need a motion. I make a motion that we adopt the 2024 budget, a proposed motion that this Gearheart City Council adopt the 2024 budget in the amount of. Eight million, five hundred, twenty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. Which includes a permanent tax rate limit levy of 1.0053 per thousand of assessed value and general obligation debt service.
Do you need also number two?
Second, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? No, right. Then we're gonna move on to. The Road District, 999.
So in our process, we include in our full budget both the general operating budget, special revenue funds. And we include the Gearheart Road District, which all of our budget committee members are members of. It does, however, require a separate resolution because it has a separate tax base that we impose. So this is just the budget that was, again, in our regular budget that the budget committee already approved, no changes.
I'll take a motion.
I think that we adopt Resolution nine nine nine, adopting the budget for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, imposing taxes, categorizing taxes, and making appropriations for the City of Gerhard.
And I'll read the actual motion she wrote. So uh, the Gerhard City Council adopt the Gerhard Road District approved twenty twenty four, twenty five budget in the amount of three hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars with a permanent tax rate limit levy of point zero six oh two per thousand of assessed value.
I give. Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. A resolution fixing the compensation of the following officers of the City of Gerhard, city attorney, police chief, fire chief, city administrator, treasurer, and judge, repealing all prior resolutions affixing the compensation of these officers of the City of Gerhard. Now.
So I'm not, I'm not entirely sure why there is specific, I, I mean, I don't think that there is a specific legal requirement for this particular resolution. But it, it has been historically done in the City of Gerhard and it does um provide, you know, a level of transparency. So I, I don't think there's anything wrong with having it. I think that um the charter specifically says in section twelve that there are specific positions that the city will affix, that the council will affix the stoppers. So I think that that's where the initial creation of this resolution comes from. So we have modified it from last year was this format, so this this carries forward where we have our city attorney um on a retainer through contract. That is five thousand dollars per month. Um, they haven't negotiated any changes that I know of. Um, we put some of that retainer into the admin part of the budget and we put some of that retainer into planning because those are the two major areas um that we need the most work with. Um, the judge, we did not make any changes from last year, the same salary. The um compensation piece for the police chief, fire chief, city administrator, and the trailer positions, tho, those are in the budget and they're approved. So anybody can go online and look at those salaries for transparency of what they are. Um, they can be modified uh later on if there is a special agreement or something, but we do have them available. And um I, I think that that's why this resolution exists.
And this is what we based our budget on, this with the Budget Committee reviewed and agreed upon.
Correct.
So I agree with both of you that the uh Gerhard City Council pass a resolution affixing the compensation of all my officers of the City of Gerhard, city attorney, police chief, fire chief, city administrator, treasurer, and judge, and repealing all prior resolutions affixing the compensation that these officers of the City of Gerhard uh pursuant to Resolution one thousand. Is that, is that gonna work?
Yep.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Because a hundred and six years gives one thousand resolutions, congratulations.
A hundred, yes.
Yeah. Like we should have some legal fireworks.
All right. Ordinance preservation and removal of trees.
I, I, to the time constraints and, and the late uh information that I received and some late um correspondence we've received, I think there's gonna be some robust discussion about this. Um, and I would propose that we move it over. I'd like to make a motion that we move it to the next agenda and, and have a public hearing where people can speak. Some have been significant, I feel, some significant changes since the last time um we discussed it and had a public hearing.
Okay, are you advocating that goes to the July city council meeting?
Um, well, I, I would be open to however we do it as long as we, we have a hearing for the public to speak because I've had several people say, how do I speak about this? Who do I speak?
Well, they were invited twice to speak to the planning commissioner.
Um, I would like Carrie to be present. Oh, I, I, I'm fine with that, with however, whatever time you think is appropriate.
August city council meeting.
Well, is that agreeable?
I'm a medical.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, we'll move it to.
Do you need a motion for that or do we?
We can just put it on the agenda for, um, start.
Okay.
Yes, and it's not for a public hearing.
Uh, yeah, so to be clear, the request is so that we can have a uh advertised for and announced, put in a public hearing so that people know that there's an opportunity for the public to speak. We'd like to have that in August, we need to have that soon.
Yeah, and that's because of the major change on the Heritage Street.
Or the conversation, yeah, we haven't had any changes with that. That, that was a conversation to be had in the future. Um, but we have had some recent correspondence and some people interested in talking about it. So the reason there was not a public hearing here at this particular meeting is because we had it, as you were saying, Sharon, uh, we had the public hearings at the city council and then finally the mission. Um, but the goal is to get as much involved in it as possible.
So how do we ensure that, that this discussion doesn't end up happening at, you know, eight thirty at night? I mean.
I haven't looked and seen.
I don't know, we're probably pretty tired. It's not.
We could have it at uh six thirty or six o'clock, the hearing. So it happens beforehand?
Yeah, we could do it first thing and then have the hearing and then like we did tonight with the road naming and then, then move the vote to, to the thing so that people could fully participate, but not be late in the evening.
All right.
So so far we'll get then uh during a six thirty start time in August.
Right. Okay, now we're going to naming a private road. We're going back to the beginning.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, so we've had a discussion earlier during the public hearing. We did not see any testimony uh on the private road naming. I went through the staff report for you in pretty good detail. Uh, if there are any other questions before we move forward?
And they did make a motion vote on it.
Garrett is also online.
Correct, and we have Garrett online, thank you. This, if there is any other questions for him.
All right, so.
No, I'm just.
Does anyone have anything to say?
We do need to make the uh resolution and, or the uh, the motion for the resolution here in the meeting because previously we did that in the.
Hearing, okay.
Yeah, so um I make a motion um uh based on the finding in the staff report that the subject road be uh named McAdamsport um pursuant to ordinance nine four four and ordinance naming a private road in McAdamsport.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
We'll bring this back to you in July, the second reading.
Okay, next is Planning Commissioner. Could you read the synopsis if you'd mind?
We have to mayor, council. Uh, Planning Commissioner Judy Schechter announced a reservation to the Planning Commission in April. We were relocated from the area. The last meeting was in May and the city would like to thank Judy for her service. In December, three seats were up for assignment and six applications were interviewed. Two commissioners were reacquired and one interview applicant took the third seat. The mayor notified city staff in advance his intention to recommend appointment of one of the five remaining applicants that were interviewed. Henry Ferguson, Jennifer Gray, Carl A, Donnie Nash, and Shelley O'Neil. To appoint, the mayor shall nominate an applicant. The city council shall, shall confirm the nominee by majority vote. If the city council fails to confirm an applicant, the mayor shall nominate another. The term of office for a member shall be four years, with terms expiring in November thirty of the fourth year after appointment importance for the position as in fill. But assuming a seat, the expiration date stands. Position four is set to expire in twenty twenty six. City staff does not have a recommendation and the legal analysis is per ordinance five three two, passed in eighty one, amended in eighty six with five nine one.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Gray to the position.
I'll sit down.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Ben? Welcome to the Planning Commission. It's gonna be just like this, long and tedious. Okay, next is Criminal Justice Commission, Records Management I G A.
Thank you very much. So uh, this uh staff report came from uh Chief Gregory as well. The provided information courtesy of Chief Gregory, Chief Gregory outlines the intergovernmental agreement authorized by ORS one nine zero one zero one zero, allowing local governments and state agencies to collaborate. Subgrantees in who the Gerhard Police Department are participating in Klaasen County's modernization project for computer aided dispatch, otherwise known as C A D, and record management, uh, and record management systems, R M S, funded by a five hundred and seven thousand dollar grant from the Criminal Justice Commission, C J C. The project aims to enhance the delivery of statistical transparency of policing, stop data, mandated by Oregon's H B two three five five law in the twenty seventeen winter recession. Central Square was selected as the application for this new C A V and R M S system. The Klaasen County Board of Commissioners supports this project for the benefit of the citizen. The agreement is effective upon execution will last until December thirty one, two thousand twenty five. The county will manage payments and ownership of the C A V R M S system post implementation. The Gerhard Police Department, as a subgrante, agrees to the grant terms, accepting delivering the responsibility for all related hardware for modern software. They will cover costs for any elected modules. They mean the city of Gerhard will cover the cost of any elected modules or services beyond this project, unless funded by remaining grant funds and agreed upon by the majority of the involved parties. The department will take full responsibilities for a portion of the system after implementation. The recommendation is that this is a council decision. Gerhard Police Department supports entry into this I G A. City Attorney Peter Wass developed the question. The costs are an allocation based on total users for each agency. The Gerhard Police Department be cured. An additional, initial breakdown cost for the twenty twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, that cost is an annual subscription rate for four thousand two hundred, maybe uh, four thousand two hundred dollars and eighty percent. Allocation subscription for all of one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. An allocated time services for all, six thousand ninety-eight forty-four for total subscription, subscription plus services at eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. The total is to be paid by the Gerhard Police Department for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five and will be reimbursed through this adjacent grant. The Gerhard Police Department will continue the current H A R M S system justice. Now, so this is a new system that we're talking about. Our current system is called justice. It's antiquated, uh, hasn't been able to keep up with what the demands of the police department were. Uh, using so for the twenty twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, we will continue with justice as well, terminated services for the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. This is due to the need to import data from justice to Central Square and for us to utilize that system while, uh, while we're upgrading. The Gerhard Police Department will then incur an annual subscription with Central Square for the current cost of the subscription of four thousand two hundred dollars and eighty-three cents. The allocated subscription for all of one thousand four hundred and fifty-five for a total annual cost of five thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
I have questions.
Uh, before you ask that question, may I, I'll make sure, uh, just in case that you're a little, or any questions I might not be able to answer, sir?
Seems like a deal.
Thanks, sir.
And I'm sure it's an easy answer, I'm just trying to guess. What is the difference between a subscription and an allocated subscription?
Great question. So I, I would, I understand the times of the essence of, in this, so I would, I would like you to authorize us to um move forward, but I have several concerns with this. I need to speak to the um county council because the county handled the public contracting, we didn't. Um, I've had uh concerns in the past with this company and their underlying contract, which was missing material terms. So I want to analyze the underlying contract to make sure that all the terms that need to be in there are and also to verify the, the public contracting method that was utilized in order to arrive at this agreement. So absent those items, and, and if, if everything's fine, then okay. But um, we need, we, 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 I need to independently verify this because we were not involved in the public contracting.
Okay, so should we wait until you get back to us?
Well, I don't know the timing, I mean, I, I um, I stated some reservations a, a week or so ago when this first hit my desk and I was not aware of the timeline. So I thought we were in the public contracting space. Um, and so I, it's not too late to do the verifications that I need to do. I just need to do them in the next week or so. And if, if everything was handled as it should have been handled, then um, okay. But I, I, I'd like to independently verify that myself.
Wait, but we're making a decision tonight without?
That if, if, if those, if predicate steps are missing, then we would not move forward signing this I G A.
That would be part of the.
Oh, okay.
So to, to allow us to independently verify that, that the process as we understand it should have happened, happened, and that all material terms we've been expecting the contract are present.
Uh, but I still don't know the difference between subscription, allocate, subscription.
I, I would guess, I mean, this is, that's probably inaccurate, but I would guess that the annual subscription is the subscription for the whole software and a allocated subscription is the City of Gerhard's.
Particularly how many officers we have subscribed into it. So because we have three officers.
Thank you.
That's what I would guess.
Okay.
But.
So Peter, do you have a motion that will include all that language?
Yeah.
No, I just. You do?
I can, I can draw one up right now.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I don't know what computer aided dispatch is. What does that mean, practical terms?
I can only guess. Um, I assume it's the system itself since on our iPads we do have them deep pulled right now, we can see what other agencies are doing and we can access information about the case we're working on. I assume that's gonna be my computer assisted.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, it is similar.
It's away from the old system where they would call, hey Carl, car quarter two, you're gonna go to nine nine nine, whatever, and somebody would be writing with a notepad there and then you, you know, you would remember that somebody else defended that hall or been to that house for something. So it just provides additional information.
We use it for our ser, uh, services as well. And so it gives us location, it gives us a map, it gives us some pertinent details and some things that are not set out on radio for various security reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I am gonna ask that you move to approve the C J C I G A pending reviewing confirmation of material terms in contracting process by the city attorney. And why do you say so?
So.
Second?
Second. I'll take the motion, she'll take the second.
Okay. I'll vote with a discussion. None? So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Peter. City Administrator reviews postponed, council concerns. Preston? Rita? Dana?
Um, just, I guess, um, maybe I'd like a little bit more information first to have a discussion about how you all would like to receive the reports from the cloche group meetings. Do you want something in writing? Maybe Peter can weigh in on how we do this. Should we give it, give out something in writing if that's okay to submit to everybody? Or does we wait until, so it's okay to spread the news once people do reply? Yeah, once people do not reply.
Yeah, as 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 long as you're not making decisions via group emails, yeah, it's fine to share information.
Okay.
I had that conversation with Peter today, that was whether or not the counselors, um, you wanna refresh on this maybe? Yeah, so like, there was a question on serial meetings, and I'll try and be really brief. Um, there was a jurisdiction where they would arrive at decisions outside of public meetings, which they unfortunately calendar to the book club. Um, and they would, they would have conversations with each other, but no one would have conver- no one member would have a conversation with majority, but the the decision would have been made. So that's what's referred to as a serial meeting. So like, an illegal public meeting would be like, if the five of you got together on a weekend and made decisions about council business. Like, you could get together on a weekend, have brunch, and talk about how great the weather is, but once you start discussing council business, making decisions, that would be an illegal public meeting. A serial meeting is when decisions get made through um a bunch of different conversations around the um, the topic. And it's really most important um to be super careful around land use applications. Like, if someone has that application for a certain uh land use, because we want all those conversations to happen in a public meeting and we want ex parte contacts, they need to be disclosed, and we wouldn't want um that happening. So like, if it's something of a general, like, I think we really need to talk about fireworks this year. If you guys like say that outside of a public meeting, it's not that big of a deal. But if you have an ordinance that's in front of you or a cooked concept in front of you and multiple people are having multiple conversations about it, that's where we run into the potential uh public meeting violation done by um serial meeting. So I um would just say that it's normal to have conversations, people have conversations with you guys all the time regarding things that could become city business. When it's actually on the agenda, you need to be vigilant about how many other counselors you might have uh conversations with because that's where we can get into the serial meetings.
So how does um two city counselors meet in the cloche group, having meetings with them? How does that fit into what you just said?
It doesn't. The concern was that if then there are reports from the cloche group that are being generated, then what we don't want is someone hitting reply all on the email and saying, I think we need to extend the cloche contract ten thousand dollars or for a month or whatever it is, and then have two more people hit reply all and say, oh, I agree that that's a great idea because then you've made a decision outside of a public meeting.
What's your opinion on a city counselor who is attending those meetings, keeping your city counselors up to date?
Yeah, as long as it's just like, we met with cloche group, they're, they're suggesting six whatever meetings and this and this and that. Like, that's not, it's not a problem to keep you guys updated. Just like Rita keeps you guys updated on the housing stuff. And, you know, all of you have kind of stuff that's in your purview that you might provide updates to the council on. It's when decisions start getting made outside of a public meeting that you really have the problem. And it it was, it used to be, it was, people were concerned about a illegal public meeting, now it's more this concept of a serial meeting.
So, so I'm gonna do a hypothetical for our.
Good.
So let's say I send out something saying, hey, here's the timeline and we think that we want to go out for, you know, the bond this coming November. We don't, so don't forget, but let's say hypothetically, that's what we sent this email. Everybody could pay attention to that, and if they had something that they wanted to say on it, they, somebody would say, hey, we need to have a meeting so we can discuss this.
Yeah, could we, could you put this on?
Instead of replying all saying, are you out of your mind, you can't do that?
Right, so it's like, hey, could we get into, I'd like to have a conversation on this, can we get an agenda item? That's perfectly fine. If if it starts being like, oh, I, we definitely need to go out in November, and then someone else is like, ditto, um, I'm feeling good about it, you know, that's how we start getting into those, that serial meeting issue.
All right.
I will do your turn.
I was going with the concern.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, did anybody else have any concerns, David?
You start.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Darren? Thank you, Rita.